All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, let's see, our invocation, Bishop Thomas Lee McDonald.
Let everybody bow. Father, right now, in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you praise and honor and glory. We thank you for allowing us to come together one more time in your presence. Father, we should have gone to the hospital, Lord, take those in, Lord, heal their body, Lord. Father, we thank you, love, because you are a merciful God. We thank you because you've been so good to us. Protector to the storm, Lord, oh, our family, friends, and neighbors. Father, right now, in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you for all things. In Jesus' name we pray, and let everybody say, "Amen."
Amen.
Okay. Okay. Item number three, recognition of Councilman Jesse McQueen, and we're gonna let him start.
Okay, I'll be very brief. I know I have a habit of going long-winded, but I just wanted to announce to everyone tonight that I will be resigning from the Hamlet City Council, effective here in just a few minutes. My wife and myself, we have moved all the way to Rockingham. We built a house on a little bit of land and just got a little more, a little more privacy, a little more, a whole lot of quiet, I'll just put it like that.
You moved to the country?
Yeah, I moved to the country. But I did want to just thank everyone in the town that supported me over the years. My service to Hamlet started in nineteen ninety-one, December the fifth. At twenty-one years, six days old, I started as a police officer here in Hamlet. Worked up until two thousand and five. Two thousand and five, I ran for city council and was elected. Served 'oh nine. From 'oh nine until two thousand and thirteen, I did not run for council. And in two thousand and thirteen, I got back on the council. So I was elected for four terms, for a total of fourteen years and ten months. I'm very proud of my accomplishments that I've had. This is home. This is, this is home. And I really enjoyed serving to people in Hamlet. And I told myself I wasn't gonna do this, so just bear with me for just a minute. Some of my best times has been in this town, and some of my worst times has been in this town. And as I walk out of the door tonight, I can tell you that this is one of the best times. I want to thank my wife, Wanda, for all her support. Also, both children, they're not able to be here tonight because of their jobs. And all the council people that I've served with over the years had some really great relationships, some not so great, and some that healed, and they got back on track. It's been an honor to serve with this board particularly. I hope the town will get behind these elected leaders and whenever they choose a replacement, that the citizens will move forward in a positive manner. I've learned in these fourteen and a half years that you're never gonna make everybody happy. You're gonna make a lot of people angry. But if you do what is laid on your heart to do, and you do it in a manner that you're, that you're doing what you think is the right thing, that it all works itself out. So having said that, I want to thank Abby, and Amy, and Oscar, and Eddie. I'm not gonna kid you, I'm gonna miss you the most, Eddie. I'm telling you, I really value our friendship and our time on council. It means a lot to me.
Same here.
Means a lot to me.
Same here.
TC, I'm very fortunate to be able to work with you for several years. I think that was one of the best things we did, was to get a municipal attorney to look after us. And you've kept us out of trouble a lot, I really appreciate it. And for Lane, thank you for your service, and, you know, McKenzie, and just, you know, you know, everybody that's been here, city clerk, fire chief. Pat, enjoyed working with you, probably a little bit more after we wasn't on together. But I could go on and on. I love Hamlet. I will always consider Hamlet my home. And in my next elected office, hopefully, I will continue to look out for Hamlet in Hamlet's best interest. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Would any of our council members like to say anything?
Well, I would just like to reiterate what Jesse said. I've enjoyed working on the council with him, as being on the council. I think he's made a great city council member. I really hate to see him leave. I feel like, I told him earlier, I feel like I'm at a wait tonight, a visitation at a funeral home. I just, this is something I really haven't looked forward to. But I wish you the best of luck in your, in your next endeavor. And certainly, I'll be in touch with you. I hope you'll stay in touch with me.
Absolutely. Thanks, chief.
I'd like to thank you, Jesse, for your service. I remember when you became a Hamlet police officer, you did a great job. You had a good councilman, and I've enjoyed working with you some of the times. But we have become a friendship, I made a friendship, and I thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
And I'll just wish you the best.
Appreciate it.
And I want to say that I think you personify you serve our community because you think you make a difference, and that's what public service is all about. And it's not always easy, as you just said, and it's not always, we have to do some things that really we'd rather not do, but you, you've always done them, and you've stood up for the decisions you've made. And I think we've worked well as a group, and you're gonna leave a huge hole when you move to the country. I can't help but be a little envious, but I hope you will love your new life, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say thank you also, Jesse. I've only been up here with you all a short time, but it's been a pleasure, and thank you for all your years of service. And I have two things to present to you. One is a plaque, and it says I will, I'll read it first. Presented with gratitude and appreciation to Mayor Pro Tem Jesse McQueen in recognition of fourteen years of serving faithfully on Hamlet City Council following his election in two thousand and four, five, to two thousand and nine, and then two thousand and thirteen to present. Your knowledge and commitment have been tremendous assets to the city of Hamlet. So yeah, if we can go down there, we'll see the picture. We also, we also have a key to the city that we're gonna
And Jesse, we have something that we got for you, and I hope you get a lot of great
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Abby, will you move over here?
Oh, no, not right now. I'm gonna stay where I am. Thank you. Enjoy. Thank you, Wanda.
Okay, item number four, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Approval of consent agenda. Do I have a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now comments from attendees. I believe we have at least one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilpersons. See, I always feel like a short person, after just my I have two things I'd like to cover with you this evening. I appreciate your time and attention. Last city council meeting, I gave you this handout. This is the swell project for the Spring Street project that we had talked about. I did have the pleasure of meeting with the city manager and assistant to just kind of discuss some topics, and the findings were that the city does not enter into contracts with independent providers. However, we did discuss maybe having a one-day event to kind of clean up the streets a little bit. So that's still on the table. The challenge I have with that is that's still a reactive measure, and it's not a proactive to have ongoing. If we look at how often we're gonna get our side of the city's street cleaned, it's every two years. Because when they cleaned a portion of High Street, it had been two years prior to that before anybody even addressed it. So it's still a challenge to kind of determine when our side of town is gonna get cleaned on a regular basis, which is the city's responsibility. But I think I put that or presented that in the wrong form to where it actually should have went to Public Works, opposed to the sanitation side, which my documentation reflects. So I look forward to speaking with the head of the Public Works Department in the coming weeks to kind of figure out what we could do on a regular schedule to get my Spring Street projects cleaned. We offered to do the ten blocks. We just need our street cleaned on a regular basis. Main Street gets their street cleaned quite regularly, and it looks beautiful. We just want our side to look the same.
Have you talked with any of the property owners on Spring Street?
Oh, absolutely. We're moving forward with some pieces of our project, which is to get the residential aspect of what they're responsible for cleaned. So in the next couple of weeks, looking at our grid, it's a sixty-day grid that we're looking at, timeline, but in the next sixty days, you'll see a significant difference. But it still doesn't negate what the city is responsible for getting cleaned. So it kind of, it's kind of the same thing. So if the city does its part, but the residents don't, we still look a mess. But if the residents do their part, and the city doesn't do theirs, we're still a mess.
Right.
So our goal was to kind of bridge that gap and bring it together. So we have the buy-in of our residents that we wanted to tackle. We are still in talks with some of the nuisance or neglected properties. So we are still working with that, at least to get the face part of it cleaned, so it does look good. So it is still a work-in process. We just don't know how we're gonna handle the city side.
Well, I just knew a lot of those properties owned by absentee property owners, people who don't even live in Hamlet. And
That's correct, and we've been using the GIS
I didn't know if you were getting any buy-in from them at all.
Oh, we've, we've got significant buy-in to where we've already sent some contracts out to them, and where we're gonna send our bill for doing their property. So that's already in the works. We still got a few, that's challenging, to say the least, but it's still a work-in process. But for the most part, we have made significant impact on the residents. We just don't know what we're doing with the city side of things. But I do appreciate your ear. I do appreciate the city manager and the assistant listening, and hopefully, we can come to some type of resolution on what that looks like, so that my side of the town looks good, as Main Street does. Did anybody have any questions for me as a result, as it relates to this?
No, but can I read you what the code says?
Certainly.
On our Hamlet code and compliance?
Yes, sir.
It says here, under the statute eighteen dash eleven, the cleaning and repairing streets, sidewalks, and drains. A, the Public Works Department will clean and repair all streets, all streets, sidewalks, and storm drains, and when special cleaning or repair is required by condition defined in statute eighteen-ten. And it comes up and shows it, and it shall, says, "Special cleaning or repairing of streets, sidewalks, and the storm drainage system shall be deemed to be required when their condition is such that the public health, safety, welfare, or public use of the same is threatened, limited, or impaired. The use and enjoyment of property abutting the streets or sidewalks is diminished or limited, or substantial damages caused in the street, sidewalks, and drainage facilities abut the property." And that comes in the, under the heading of Department of Public Works.
Look at that statement on eighteen dash ten where it indicates safety.
Yes, it does.
Based on my plan that I gave you, I had illustrations, it's a severe safety and hazard risk on all blocks on my side of town, based on the Spring Street project.
But what gets, what sticks out to me is it is all streets, and the city's laying all streets.
And that's the statute that I read, it said all streets, but unfortunately, all streets does not include Spring Street for some reason, because if it did, we would not be having two-year gaps in getting our streets cleaned.
I understand. And it says here, under Article B, "The Public Works Department will keep records and the cost of all specifically required cleaning and repair, which may be computed on the basis of established per mile or per hour cost of the use of city equipment, plus labor and materials, including water, and it all be computed to the city." So it comes in, and it is in the code, and it is to be complied with, with. But this comes under the heading of the Department of Public Works, and they've got to keep a record and keep all streets clean.
Correct. That's why I indicated that, when I first made my proposal, it went under sanitation, per se. So maybe that language is a little mis, you know, understood, I should say. It should be more directed to the public works. So I'll look forward to, and I think that's, is that Robert Brown?
It is, yes.
Robert Brown, the Public Works Department.
So I'll look forward to speaking with Mr. Robert Brown to kind of see what we can come up with at a future date.
Has it given you any satisfaction?
Beg your pardon?
Has it given you any satisfaction?
I have not spoken to him as of yet.
As of yet.
Yeah, but I do intend to speak with him in the coming weeks.
And explain, and let him ride and look, and it shouldn't be too hard to figure out if you go and look and see the clean. And I have the same problem on my street, and it comes in, and where sand on the hills comes in, and overgrowth comes off the city property and getting it cleaned, and it's a, it's a chore sometimes.
Well, when you peel back the muck that we have on some of our streets, just like High Street, you will see the raised sidewalks, which is, as I said in my first presentation, it is a safety hazard. Because it's not a matter of when someone trips and falls, and who's responsible, it's when.
He is, the city is responsible for all the streets.
So
And keep them clean.
For this part of my presentation, I would, does anybody else have any other questions? Because it's still open for us. We're still moving forward. We are going to look differently to see, once we talk with Mr. Brown, and kind of see what we could come up with, to see what we could do to get our ten blocks on our side of the town maintained on a regular basis. Whether that's doing a contract with the city, or them scheduling, because I'd love to see, and I'm sure that's public record as well, to see the records of when they're supposed to come and maintain versus when they did come to maintain our streets.
But that is a city street. They all are city streets, and they ought to be maintained equally, all over the city.
I think I have to say something here, because I think there's an inference that there are places, majority of which are being taken care of, and you are purposely being neglected. And I don't think that's the situation at all, because nobody maintains my street. I don't know of any private streets and residential areas in any part of town that the city maintains on a regular They maintain Main Street, and that's it.
Okay. Well, then that's something we need to look at, and the inference that I'm singling out my street, my street is the only street that I could speak on, and I don't want you to take it as a personal attack or a collaborative attack, that I think my side is being neglected. But when it comes to the specifications of, I can't speak to anybody else's street but mine, and that's what I'm speaking to. It's my street, and based on the records as of now, my street has not been maintained in over two years. I don't know what the maintain on your street is, but I don't want you to take away that, that it's a personal attack.
Part of the inference of the code, when it speaks to maintenance, is not just clipping the grass.
Oh, yeah.
It's maintenance of the street, per se, the curbing, the gutter, things like that. And I think, to the extent possible, they do that, you can welcome to ride down into Whistle Street, and somebody would probably say, "Well, I'm sure that street's in great shape." I have a huge hole, huge hole in front of my house, and I've had it for probably fifteen years. But, you know, we don't, the city, the city crews don't maintain streets aesthetically in private residential areas or anywhere else. The aesthetic maintenance comes on Main Street and around city parks, which is communal property for the whole town. And if, I think if there's any, in defense of Public Works, I don't want anybody here to think that we do this in certain areas, and we don't do it in others, because they don't do that kind of aesthetic work in these communities.
So when it says on that code of eighteen eleven and eighteen twelve, uh, eighteen-ten, it says all streets, we should probably look at maybe saying, not all streets, maybe just Main Street.
Does it say all streets will be maintained, and they are maintained?
It says, "The Public Works Department will clean and repair all streets, sidewalks, and storm drains."
Right.
Okay.
So
That's what's in the code says.
Right.
That's not what we said, it's what the code says on there.
So even with that reference of the code, Spring Street project that we put in is still not being maintained if you look at the sidewalks, if you just want to peel back the layers.
Neither is in Whistle Street.
Okay, but again, I can't address what's on that street. I'm trying to get things improved on my Spring Street project.
Well, in defense of Public Works, there is no deliberate neglect of any area.
Nor do I want that to be implied, please. I do not want that to be implied, that it's being singled out. What I'm saying is, I'm speaking to my street, my neighborhood, my ten blocks. Please don't, don't take it out of context. I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to divide. We, this county's worked a long, hard way
Well, I can just say my street's not either.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's all I ask for.
Right.
Parity's all I ask for, and if it's parity, it's okay.
Absolutely. Anything else on this? Okay, perfect. We'll let that one go. The next thing is, remember this weekend is the Community Cookout. It is from one to five. We did get a lot of commitments from most of y'all. We still look forward to seeing everyone there. It is October twelfth. We did get approved, thank you to the city manager's side of things for that street closure of High Street, from Spring Street to the end of our driveway. So we look forward to the Public Works Department to drop off road closure signs at least by Thursday or Friday, since they're closed on Saturdays.
Good. What kind of entertainment would you go have?
We, we have W A Y N that's gonna be out there DJing. He's also cooking. They're also providing the fish and chicken. I want everybody to go to our website of dochillsfamilycarehome.com, D O C H I L L S, familycarehome.com. Look under Events. You will see our wonderful poster that advertises the cookout, but it also gives you our community providers. We'll give you a full, detailed list at the next meeting to just give them a thanks, but we do want to thank H, Hamlet Police Department, Hamlet Fire Department's gonna be there, along with EMS. We also have some really nice donations from Dollar General, Captain D's, Godfather's Pizza, Strikers Bowling, a lot of vendors in the county to give away gift prizes and so forth. So please just look at our website at dochillsfamilycarehome.com, just to see our list of vendors, and we're very appreciative. So we will have music, we will have games out there, outdoor games, and we're gonna have lots of prize giveaways with different things that cater to our businesses right here in Hamlet.
Yeah. I was thinking maybe Brother Gerard Morrison might be gonna do a song or two.
Oh.
I saw him sitting back there.
Don't get him started. But yes, he will be there, too.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much for your time. Did anybody have any other questions?
No.
For me? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Denise.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Everett. I have seen some, actually, I've seen everyone but you, Mr. Eddie, at Mega Park. So I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the Culture Queens that are currently at Mega Park, and to talk about Mega Park. We, too, are having an event on Saturday. The event is gonna be from seven to nine, and it is to start growing our arts and culture here in Hamlet, North Carolina, and Richmond County. It will be a closing reception for the artists that is currently on display at Culture Queens Gallery at Mega Park. Artist Annie Renee Harden has an exhibit up. It's called "An Ode to Jazz." It is an exhibit that highlights her work and her love for jazz. And of course, we want to honor the jazz history that is here. We mentioned Gerard, who just happens to be here. We will have live, well, not live music, we will have entertainment as well. Jazz will be playing. You will have the opportunity to check out the art exhibit, and there's an additional exhibit that is at Mega Park. For those who are not familiar, Mega Park is a virtual reality arcade game room, and it gives everyone the opportunity to come in and travel away if you would like. If you want to ride a roller coaster, there's an opportunity for that. Mega Park is open Saturday from one to six, and then the event will be from seven to nine. You all are invited. I have heard from a few of you. And like Denise, I would like to thank everyone that is committed to coming out and being a part of the event. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone want to RSVP now? I'll be there. I look forward to seeing you.
But I can't, because I'm conflicted with it.
Okay. Well, we have another one coming, which leads me to my last question, remark. November ninth, we will be placing a new exhibit in. A native here from Hamlet will be going in, and the exhibit is called "Some Things Got a Hold on Me." The exhibit will consist of twenty pieces. In addition to artwork, there will be jewelry that will be on display from another resident here in Hamlet, North Carolina. In addition to that, we will have light hors d'oeuvres, we will have drinks, and again, entertainment. So please mark your calendars now for November ninth to come out. This is an opportunity, again, for us to grow and start really supporting the arts and culture that is in the area, as well as the businesses here. Any question?
Sounds like a great event.
Thank you.
What are the times on November ninth?
The seven, the times are the same, seven to nine.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Awesome, awesome. I'm gonna make this quick. So again, my name is Esco. I'm the guy with the orange door and pretty grass. I wanted to kind of touch bases with you with the last proposal I had for the seventy-four cleanup, which is really, really simple. I met with the inner-city manager, Mr. Lane Bryant, and McKenzie, and we got kind of started on it and some ideas, and I'm happy to say that everyone's fully on board with getting everything done. But we wanted to make sure we worked out the responsibilities of what the city was gonna do, and what the volunteers were gonna do. Now, these suggestions came from two parties. I'll pull up one part from Councilman Abby, Councilwoman Abby, I apologize, and Oscar. So we want to use the city and the citizens together to come together, so we can clean up this corridor. And I think we're kind of getting there. We've got a couple of things we want to work out, traffic mitigation. Management has definitely worked on that, McKenzie and Mr. Lane Bryant. And my job is to make sure we get the volunteers put in place. I've also reached out to Lowe's Corporate. That's something I'm used to doing. Lowe's Corporate is going to donate some of the twos to the volunteers, so yay to Lowe's Corporate, and that's located in Rockingham. So the other thing we wanted to address was the ordinance of vehicles being parked in the front yards. We wanted to address that a little bit, so we can kind of clean that up. We want to be able to say that this is the hallmark of our city, and this is what we represent. If you have a driveway, but again, that's pending city council approval. So don't think that I'm just saying this is what we're gonna do in city council. I need your approval on this, and if you don't, then we'll make, we'll make way with it some other way. Looking ahead, we did get a tentative date of April the fifth, twenty twenty-five. That should give me enough time to round up the volunteers, and that should give the city enough time to round up and get prepared for the cleanup on that one corridor. We're talking about one street. I understand there's a lot of bigger projects that I've heard tonight. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for one street, so we can showcase who we are and what we represent here. The city has a lot of history, beautiful history, and it's not being showcased. And I want people to start coming down the inner seventy-four, and start making a right and not a left. Remember, we got company coming. We got Pinehurst twenty twenty twenty-nine. We want to be ready for that. We want to be ready for those who are coming through for the beach.
You're talking about Hamlet, all of Hamlet, Abby, and?
Yes, ma'am. Well, no, ma'am, I am talking about from Crawford Law Firm down to about where Axon Grind is.
Okay.
Yes. That's typically where the traffic starts to slow down around, anywhere between one and five. It gets staggered, and I think it would kind of showcase who we are. I, myself, Ms. Sylvia, who lives right behind me, I And, um, I think it, it would kinda showcase who we are. I myself, uh, Ms. Sylvia, who lives right behind me, I cut her grass for her and I cleaned her curb for her. And again, that took me about two hours to do her two sides, uh, twenty-five pound pickaxe on a Saturday afternoon, and that was interesting. As a matter of fact, it was so much dirt, uh, she broke my cart and I gotta get a new cart and Lowe's is gonna be kindly enough to replace that cart for me. So I thought that was awesome. Uh, and to maintain these, uh, these efforts, uh, what we, what we suggested, what I suggested to the management was that we have it done quarterly. That way it's not so taxing on the city for its resources and manpower, but it's also still maintains the work that we're gonna put into this. Because we just don't want this to start up and then just kinda fickle out. I, I, I really don't wanna see that. I really wanna, I would, you know, if I had to do it by myself, I probably would. And I think, uh, oh, my fiance, she's here. I, I got engaged. Um.
Congratulations.
Uh, she knows how I am. I would, you would probably see me going up that road, uh, more than likely. I, I'm inching up by myself already. Um, I also reached out to code enforcer Dalton Miller to ensure that his team can regularly patrol the seventy-four corridor. To ensure compliance with this, this city, uh, ordinance already, this regarding lawn care. So again, that came from Oscar. I just kinda followed suit of what you were saying in our last meeting. And I also reached out to, uh, Chief of Police, uh, Chief Brown. Now, the reason I did, I wanna make sure that everyone's on board. This way I'm not stepping on anyone's toes and everyone knows exactly what I'm doing. Uh, because it kinda, some people feel left out, well, why wasn't I part of this discussion or why did not anyone at least reach out and let me know what's going on? He's been busy, uh, this, I'm pretty sure this is, um, a project that is maybe on his radar, but not high on his radar. His safety, the safety for the city is his main purpose. So. Um, but I'm sure it's true between now and April, he and I are gonna probably bump heads. One way to other, me riding around my scooter around town or some way, we're gonna bump heads. It's gonna happen. Let's see, what else I want to touch on? Oh, this is the last part right here. And I thought this was awesome. So if I am going to come up here and preach about, uh, ordinance and following the rules and beautification, I too have to be held accountable for that. Uh, so on Saturday, uh, my, well, but a week prior, my lawn had got destroyed in the front. That beautiful grass got trashed. And I had it repaired, uh, out of my own dime. I haven't even got the check. Well, I just got the check today, but I had it repaired on my own dime. And my landscaper, when he delivered the, the rocks, he put them too far near the road. Now, I knew that. But, um, I had my daughter this weekend and, uh, she had me on a roller coaster and I was sick. So she got me sick. But the code enforcer, Officer Miller, Millen, Dalton Millen, came out. He was very nice. And a lot of times what I've noticed is that the police officers don't get enough recognition for when they do things right, but they get all the slack when they do something wrong. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that he is acknowledging this, that he came out, he was very polite. He knocked on my door, you know, very politely. He wasn't banging on the door, you know, like the police bangs on your door. Not that I know about police banging on your door. That's not me. Maybe some of my friends in college, you know, in their twenties, they know about that. I don't know about that at all. But yes, that's what ended up happening and he was very polite with that. And he came back by and I said, listen, he called me and he said, listen, this is what's going on. I need you to address this. This was brought to my attention. I said, no problem. You let me know. Like my granddaddy used to say, learn me good. Show me where you wanted to be so I can follow in line. So if I'm gonna come up here and preach to you about beautification, it also comes with regulation. You have to, I have to follow the rules as well. If I'm gonna be the staple, if I'm gonna be the blueprint for what goes up all the way seventy-four, I need to set the example for everyone else. So I wanted to give kudos to Chief Brown because that comes from leadership and how to train your officers properly and how to interact with the, uh, citizens. And it also comes with the officer who's working in the field, who handles himself appropriately. Everything was Mr. Latimer this, Mr. Latimer this. He brought out a state measure and I thought that was just amazing. So let's give, I'd like to give him a, a round of applause as well. So I thought he did a great job. Uh, our next follow-up, um, I have another meeting with the city, uh, city management again, so we can go ahead and finalize who's gonna be doing what, how that's gonna be getting done. It's a very simple project. My hopes in this is very simple, everyone. It is my hopes that as I had my neighbors kinda pick up and they started cutting their grass more, that this will trickle out to the citizens. Cause I totally agree that the city can, the city cannot take the full burden of you taking care of your own lawn. You have to take care of your part and the city will take care of their part and then that's how we come together as a whole part. That's all I have. If you didn't wanna have any questions, feel free to ask.
I'm just looking, I was just looking through the ordinance here for parked cars and it doesn't say anything about parking in the yard.
No, sir, it does not.
And there is, it's not kind of a, any ordinance against that. Oversized load, all the other kinds it has, but it doesn't, it doesn't have that.
You absolutely correct. You absolutely correct. And that's why we will have to propose something to you and have one of our city ordinance amended. Now, that's of your approval. You can, you can still shoot it down. That's not a problem. But, you know, it would be a disservice, I believe, I feel. Now, my feelings are fickle, you know, it may go up and down, but it would do the city a disservice to have a driveway where you can openly park in your driveway, but decide to park across the front yard, across the sidewalk that goes up to your steps. It just kinda takes away. It's almost like a, a, a really nice suit. You didn't wear a tie. Like, oh, you're just, you're, you're almost there. You're almost there. But if, hey, but if you don't wanna do it, that's fine as well. The cleanup still, I think, should happen, um, and it can happen. I'm rounding up the volunteers. Worst case scenario, you'll have one old marine and a city crew out there and we'll get both sides of those streets done. So.
Well, the thing about it is you go by, you go by and you see six or eight cars parked in the front yard. That's not cool.
Well, you can go up to twelve. I think, I think we looked up, you go up to twelve, I'm like, whoa, that's a lot of cars. But, uh, I don't think we, I, when I drive up, when I ride my scooter through there, I don't see six to twelve, six to twelve. It's always about one or two. You know, one other thing, let's not leave out Mackenzie. So Mackenzie came up with a, uh, she found this. It was a form for the elderly to have their trash cans. So one of our other issues is the trash cans are being left out there. Well, the problem with like Ms. Sylvia, she's broken her hip three times. So I or her brother have to take her trash cans out and bring them back in. And so there's a form and I think Mackenzie's working on that. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, she's working on that to have it online. And those individuals can take that to their doctor, their physician, and then they can have the, the sanitation crew, uh, pick up the trash cans and bring them back. And I thought that was freaking awesome. And so what I decided to do, since I volunteered down there to see a citizen building, is to help those on, with the online process. And I'll help them fill it out because I'm doing the technology part down there for them. So I thought that was awesome. So thank you, Mackenzie, for bringing that up. And I thought the elderly will be great for that.
Well, I, at one time, I, that was, uh, a city, uh, uh, amenity for, for people with disabled, whatever.
It is.
And for some reason it was stopped.
It was stopped because a city employee went in the backyard and got bitten by a dog.
Went by a dog. About like a mail person delivering mail, they're subject to be bitten and stuff. But I think it's a amenity that we ought to have for all the disabled citizens for requests and go through the proper thing.
I totally agree with that, yeah. I thought it was awesome that it gets approved by a physician. And I do agree with you, uh, because my masters was, uh, in operations specializing in efficiencies, efficiencies. And basically in that, we have to look at every little thing, how many steps it takes, how much time it takes. And I wanna make sure that we also, the sanitation crew stays on budget, stays on time, so they finish their route timely without having to rush. Cause when you rush, you get hurt and we don't want that.
No.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I, I was gonna re, yield to, uh, past mayor Pro Tim. Good afternoon, everybody. Got my voice back a little bit. I, I call it a successful. I usually don't say that about my own things, but I gotta say I was overjoyed. The John Coltrane Music Edutainment Festival this year surpassed even things, uh, I planned. I, after a while, you know, sometimes in leadership, when it's going, you're growing, you gotta let it go. So, man, it just took off. It made history a couple of times this year. We had the, ladies and gentlemen, we had the very first time in the sixteen-year history of the John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest where a sitting mayor of Hamlet showed up and showed out. So let's make sure we have that, give that a hand.
I had a good time. It was very nice, Gerard.
All right, appreciate it. Glad you were there. We had the mayor of Elleby, the superintendent of schools, the assistant superintendent of schools, well, superintendent Futrell, assistant superintendent Ingram. The very first African-American female principal of Hamlet Middle School was there and we were, as we were pointing things out, I was like, wait a minute. As my assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent, tongue twister, Melvin Ingram. I said, was this the first in history? And so we pointed that out then, so he validated it. Um, we've had counties represent, states and counties, actually about four states. We counted, uh, eighteen counties represented. The first African-American female judge from Marlboro County, South Carolina, Nan Fleming was there. She's also an owner of a Rosenwall School in Clyo. She actually bought the school that she graduated from. So can you imagine that? And the guy Howard Calhoun, who we had in the planning and zoning meeting and, uh, as well as this council meeting that bought the property across the street. He did a James Brown dance and turned it out. So, uh, we never know the tally. You know, this is the same calm guy that's sitting right here. But found out he also owns a Rosenwall School, doing phenomenal things throughout the state, multimillion dollar grants. Robert Timothy David from Dobbin's Heights, when we went to school, it was still Hamlet. He spoke. He's the, uh, he's on the national board, presidential appointed. And dealing with community assessments and strategic plans. Robert Lee Covington, uh, from Charlotte Street, of course. He represented, he talked, he told his story about beating addiction and becoming an entrepreneur. Had a lady dealing with financial plan. She's a retired army veteran. She was in finance. And she taught, she gave a lot of tips from tiny houses and I call it her oasis in the backyard. She lives in Raleigh. I met her at the other Coltrane Fest and she did a financial planning workshop and people were real pleased. The dancers from the Hamlet Senior Citizen Center, Mary and Daisy, and then the community dancers with Lou and the whole crew. And that just, just phenomenal, all that energy. It makes us look at ourselves and say, these folks are over sixty working it from country music to R and B to remixes from the sixties and seventies. So Oscar, you would've had a good time the way you love Motown.
You got that right.
Had you up there twerking or something, man. The, um, other parts, you know, we had a lot of poets and I love to have those guys there. I'm not sure if you got to see them, Amy, but man, phenomenal. And, uh, one lady's poet, that was before you got there, a couple of lady poets. One did one, I met her at the VA. And she did one dealing with domestic violence, told a story in between. Also one dealing with addictions. And I think during this time right now of addictions to be a drugs, alcohol, uh, addictions across the board, um, that mentality. And I usually don't reference religion in there, but you know, and most religions across the board or faith communities is gonna talk about moderation. So it's, uh, hopefully we get resources from government entities as this one, as well as across the board to help with coaching folks toward better moderation. The other part, I wrote this so fast, embarrassed to say I can't read my own writing right now, but, um. Oh, I've gotta, we talk about how a lot of folks don't get recognized. You mentioned offices and things, but I've gotta say, and I said this at the county commissioners meeting. For what they have to work with, with this county of almost fifty thousand people. William Toller with the Rich and Observer and the new guy Jay Potts with the Daily Journal, uh, they cover a lot. I mean, when I'm going to these meetings, I don't know how they put these articles out so fast. And, um, they got to cover a lot, you know, through the years. Uh, Will and I, we were talking about, uh, you know, since he first got here, you know, how he showed up at the Coltrane Festival. It was inspirational to hear him talk about how much he learned just at that fest. So I challenge us all to come out more. I usually don't put him on the spot, but even our county, our city attorney talked with him in the car last meeting. I tell him, uh, things with Attorney Jay Kenneth Lee, you're gonna see me pushing more and more because in his spirit, I actually knew him well. Uh, it's my grandfather's schoolmate from Capitol Highway. Grandmother and his sister, uh, they were tied for valedictorian for a while and then my grandmother won. So. But just healthy competition. I mean, Martin Luther King and Thurgood Marshall would stay with this guy in Greensboro. Nothing like Hamlet hospitality, even away from Hamlet. But two things I wanna request. Well, first of all, October fourth, two thousand twenty-five, mark your calendars. October fourth, two thousand twenty-five will be the seventeenth annual John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. And reluctant to say this, but it is, cause I, I really wish that McQueen was here tonight. Cause when I came in, when I first came back, you remember Abby in, uh, two thousand eight, two thousand seven area, era. The, you know, y'all, y'all saw one meeting where we had our things and that was out of character for us. And I talked, talked about it with me, him and Pat were outside last time. But I wanted to, two things on record. One, that time when, uh, I called Matt a lie. It was off camera, but it was true. I've got the, he called later on that week, but I noticed it was never admitted publicly. McQueen, when he talked about how in all of his years here, uh, sixteen years, I think was the number, the strategic plan, uh, we never really had that. By coincidence, if you recall, I know you've seen a lot in this last year, Amy, but Amy was on the, uh, we, we, we sat on the planning and zoning, literally beside each other. When I asked the question when I first got appointed to that board, replacing, uh, well, not replacing, but after Dewey had moved outside the city limits. My first question in the meeting was, where's our strategic plan? Gail was then here and she responded that is, you know, at first it was silence. Then they finally, after probing further, they were like, well, it's not current. We don't have one. It was over two years late and this was before the, um, pandemic. So I'm saying as I'm listening to Esco and Denise and other things that we go through in the dialogue and exchange here. I mean, we say we're gonna live, we're gonna do it by law and Oscar, you so eloquently brought this, brought this out statute. But if we're gonna do parody and we're gonna do things in this area, we gotta make sure we do it across the board. You all heard me talk about doing a strategic plan. I was very disappointed that when we were doing this comprehensive plan during that same period, I asked, I said, when we do get the plans in order, I wanna be on that committee. Agreed. Matt shook his head. But you notice, the reason I was fervent that night, don't lie to me. I'm a granddaddy's baby. At the end of the day, he told me all you, as a man, and I say as a human, all you have is your name and your word. So with your name and your word, make sure we're consistent with it. We're gonna have slip-ups, so we just apologize. But we do sincere remorse that makes it go better. And with the spirit of John Coltrane, when it said love supreme, you know, that's the song that he got the Grammy with. It had those processes, the Psalm, the resolution. But the first one that he had is the acknowledgement. We've got to acknowledge our shortcomings as well as our good deeds like we're doing tonight. So the spirit of Hamlet, I feel it coming back, the revitalization. Too bad you're only temporary right now, city manager, but we've, um, things are, things are coming along, you know, in sociology, you talk about forming, storming, norming, then performing. So hopefully we've had enough storms where now we'd be able to, to perform even better.
Okay, Gerard, thank you. I've kinda let everybody run long on their five minutes, but I got to, I got to cut it off.
Brother Gerard, there's one thing, that's me. There's one thing I despise is a liar. A man to tell you a lie is so untrustworthy on any and every deed he does.
There we go.
I don't think a liar can do any good deeds.
Especially in public service. You gotta maintain public confidence. But thank you all.
Thank you, Gerard. All right, item number seven, our daily bread food drive.
Hey, guys. I am Mari Bennett, the director for our daily bread. Uh, excuse the wonderful attire. I've been loading trucks all afternoon, um, on our mission to, uh, help out western North Carolina. This'll be our, um, our third delivery and we'll leave out tomorrow morning at four AM and probably return somewhere around ten or eleven tomorrow night. As far as our daily bread and the, um, the needs and, and what's been going on, if we just take a flash from last year to this year, we have increased, um, the numbers by about a hundred, a hundred and fifty, uh, which is huge. Uh, it's a big jump up. We have new folks that are coming in that, um, need assistance. I am, uh, a little tighter than what they're used to as far as, um, being interested in why are you in need as far as, um, I've been coming here for ten years and, uh, quickly want to have a conversation with them and find out why. a conversation with them and find out why. And let's see if we can't put you in the right direction so you can, um, so you don't need our assistance and you get the help that you need. The ones that really need us, we're there for and we're happy to help them. Our numbers are looking like, um, just to give you an idea, we are serving somewhere around 365 people or families, that's families, uh, a month and over a thousand people, individuals a month with extreme limited resources from the government. And I have a funny feeling those are going to change and go down just a little bit more seeing that we have some major storms going on. So, um, the, uh, the assistance from the community is great and, um, I happen to be the, uh, only one that is able to lift a box over 50 pounds and drive a forklift and drive a box truck. And I welcome anyone who is interested in coming and joining, uh, if it's an hour or three days a week, as we have many. Our oldest volunteer is 94 years old and some of our younger ones float in and out, but on a regular basis, the age is around 75. We need assistance. We need canned food drives, we need dry food. And if we're going to supply the community with, um, what they say they need and what the, the state says that, uh, is a healthy box to feed them, um, we need a little extra help and, and, uh, some folks to kind of pitch in and, and get active with, um, our mission that's been going on for over 20 years. So, um, we are available, we're open Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00. And I am there in and out a lot and running around everywhere trying to see if we can't, um.
What were your hours again? What were your hours again?
From Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00. And we do have, um, some guidelines that people are required to follow. And like I said before, um, we try to get a little bit clearer understanding on why they're needing the assistance and make sure that, um, we're following as many rules as they'll allow me to follow. But anybody who's interested in help, there's a whole lot of list of different things and different, uh, availabilities, anything from picking up boxes to going to pick up at Foodline. I pick up five days a week and I go to Maxton once a month and other locations. And now that we are in the middle of this storm, I am, um, driving back and forth to the mountains and doing that with it. So I appreciate any of the help and, uh, if anybody wants to do a canned food drive or a, a benefit to help us out, we greatly appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
You're not diverting resources from Richmond County to the mountains though, are you?
Oh, absolutely not.
I thought you might want to clarify that.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. These are separate, we even have a separate account done now. Folks that will, really want to assist those, but the emergency fund pretty much states we take care of ours, but we, I myself am to tuck tail and help and dig in for our, um, North Carolina neighbors.
I wanted to point out that we're, the city, city hall, we're collecting for both, for, for western North Carolina and, and doing a food drive. A number of employees, uh, uh, helped at the, um, our daily bread with the United Way Day of Carrying and that's what brought this tonight. Just, and, and one concern we have is that the situation in western North Carolina is so bad that people may forget about the needs that we have here in Richmond County and, and we, we won't, uh, want folks to do both where they can.
And I think it's reasonable. I think she's correct when she says state resources that traditionally feed our food banks such as Sandhills and agencies like that, their resources are going to dry up because they're going to get diverted. And so there won't be any, you won't be able to access your normal resources to get this food, so.
And I'm tapping into some other, um, things that through the years, um, different directors did not dig in necessarily to some other resources. I'm trying to make some new connections so we have other resources to pull from and everything else is separate. But we're going one day a week just for the month of October and then we'll see where things stand from there. And there are, there's a lot of help happening in western Carolina, so we need to make sure we're paying attention to our community.
Are you getting any help from a ministerial association in Richmond County?
We, we have a, a number of churches that, um, assist us and, and provide even a monthly, um, allowance or, um, collection of food and they do what they can. We have a repeat collection of folks that, um, that go, I have visited over 17 churches in the area. The difference from the beginning is our daily bread started over around 20 years ago and over the last 10 years, quite a few others. So now there's providing they do all their paperwork correctly. You're 13 to 16 different ways to collect food from food banks. They do it very different ways. I am learning. I am trying to, um, um, understand there are some things you can fight against and some things you, um, that's none of your business. So, um, we're trying to make sure that we follow our rules and our guidelines and we collect food and look at any resource. I mean, we just picked up Family Dollar, I mean, uh, Dollar General, which is, um, now having fruit and vegetables. So we can now pick up from them and other new ways to collect food and try to get it in the right hands is my biggest point and make sure the kids are getting what they need.
Do you have any things that are critical needs?
Absolutely. I have a list.
Why did that surprise me?
This is just a rough list that we give to mostly churches or anyone that really asks a simple staple. Um, and just to give you a, a small, I'll leave this for you. Just an idea of, um, how much it costs. A food box, which most of it, meaning of maybe 70%, that's the state is actually sending us and we fill it in where it's lacking. That one box for one family, remind you, I, I, we are somewhere around 365 families. So one box is $25. One homeless bag, which we are seeing five to eight, the days that we're open, is $8. Math on that's pretty high. We do what we can. We give them what we can. When we run thin, we purchase, of course, and we fill in the blanks as much as we can and we encourage or I am, um, very interested in encouraging them to do all that they can to collect food and to earn a wage to help themselves.
I'd like to see your list when you get through.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be glad to give it to you.
Any other questions or comments? Okie dokie. Thank you very much, Mari.
Do you want this back?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go fill a box truck full of food. I'll take you.
Drive safely. Item number eight, enclosure number four, consideration of Richmond County Interlocal Agreement and Resolution 24, 2024 to, uh, 2026 is what that's supposed to mean. Relinquishment of portion of ETJ. So do we need to hear from anybody or have we reviewed it enough to have a vote? I know we do have one property owner here, but, so I don't know if y'all have any questions.
Um, I'm happy to speak on it if y'all have any questions and then if you have any questions for Mr. Quick, he's also available.
Why don't you hit, hit the highlight on it?
So basically this is just a split jurisdiction. It just happens when a parcel has more than one zoning jurisdiction. It just so happens that this is split between our ETJ and Richmond County's jurisdiction. For one parcel, I believe it's about 25% in our ETJ and the other is about 45%. So when this happens, um, the property owner can submit a request, which they both did, um, and they cite Article, um, I believe it's 160D 203, where they can, um, request which jurisdiction they would like to be under.
And this is just for development, not any property taxes or any of that sort of thing?
That's correct.
And it is two different properties. One is for over the tracks and one is for being investments.
Yes, that's correct.
And they're off of Perry Williams Road. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So move that we approve the agreement.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number nine, Opera House Discussion. Lane, do you want to take that?
Yes, Mayor. We briefly mentioned this, um, back in July, had David Gaul, who is a historic preservation architect, now he just does consultant, consulting. And I've actually worked with Mr. Gaul, um, a couple of different communities that I've managed and he submitted a proposal of a menu of options for the Opera House. My recommendation is that we just utilize him to update the condition, existing condition assessment. This will help us figure out what we need to do to, um, preserve the Opera House to prevent further damage and that amount is $17,750. And it'd be my recommendation that we do that, we'll utilize fund balance to cover the cost of this.
And is that including the, um, a letter identifying potential sources of funding or are we leaving that out for now?
For now, we discuss this at the staff level and our recommendation for, for right now is to leave that out.
Any questions?
I'm not clear on what he's talking about, the $17,000 or something.
This would identify issues that we need to address with the building such as the walls, the roof and what we need to do to fix that, to keep it from, um, further deterioration of the building and to preserve it where it is right now. After we do that, then we would look at, um, what we'd need to do to get it back into use.
And how much money did you say it was, Lane?
$17,750 is to do the existing conditions assessment.
And that's just for him to determine how much more money we'd have to spend to get it in compliance with state regulations. We're probably talking, what, a million dollars?
I, I don't know what we'd be talking on, on that and it's, it's to prevent it from what we need to do to prevent the, all the issues we need to address from the roof leaking to water coming in from the walls. Those are the main issues there.
Wonder what caused it to get in such bad condition?
Not having regular maintenance?
Yes.
Not, no, not maintaining.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion?
So move, I don't think it was, we've got to determine what we're going to do with it. It sits there and if we do nothing, it gets worse. If we do this, we determine if we're going to do anything at all. But it's been a discussion that's been around and around this table for 20 years and I, I don't think we can have anyone on staff who's capable of making the type of assessment that David is. David was also one of the biggest movers and drivers of the project down to move the station. So he's familiar with the city of Hamlet and he certainly knows what he's doing. And I, I feel after, if he moved that depot and we got it successfully replanted and have used it all these years, I certainly think he's capable of making this assessment.
I don't question his capabilities.
No, that's not even.
I'm just wondering, you know, if he spent $17,000 only to find out what we already know. There's going to be a million dollars worth of repairs and, and stuff that we're going to have to come up with and try to fix it or we can spend $17,000 to. But I guess that's about the only way we're going to know. That's it. I'll second your motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Discussion of City Council Vacancy. Lane?
Well, I thought that where it was going to be, that it'd be open for 30 days and people that are interested in it would submit a letter to the city manager, to the mayor or the council to be considered for the position. Is that not what's going to happen?
That's what Lane was going to talk about.
I, I think you have different options. You could certainly point someone if, tonight if you wanted to, but I, I, I think a lot of people don't know that Mr. McQueen has stepped down. We've had a couple of people express interest. We've had one person submit a letter. My recommendation would be that you, um, announce to the public and hopefully there will be a story in the media about this, that, uh, through the end of October, October 31st, uh, submit a letter of interest to the mayor and then in your meeting in November, look at the candidates, people who've expressed interest. And if you would like to, uh, make a selection then, you could do that. You could also schedule times to do interviews with those candidates. If you do do the interviews, I think the city attorney would agree that that has to be an open session. This is not an employee of the city. This is a public official and you'd have to have those open to the public.
All right. But this is not something we have to vote on, or is it?
I think you need to outline a process so the public would know how you want to fill the position. And, and if it's, if you could do 30 days, but I think if you did it through the end of the month, that would be sufficient.
I agree. TC?
You follow the city manager's advice and recommendation and do it that way. And I make a motion that we take the city manager's advice and do it by letters and, and make a decision in November.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor? TC, were you going to say something?
I think Ms. Martin's covered it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we got that down, right? So now we're down to city manager's report.
Yes. A, a couple of meetings back, uh, Councilmember Martin mentioned a grant that the city could possibly apply for. Michelle Pressler McKenzie Webb worked on that grant. The deadline was a little quicker than we realized and we received word, uh, this past week, um, that we were awarded the grant. It's for $210,000 for stadium lights for the baseball stadium. McKenzie Webb has worked on an RFP for the lights. Those are due in by noon, November the 4th, and we anticipate that we'll be able to award bids for the stadium lights at our council meeting in November. And I really appreciate the great work that, um, Michelle and McKenzie did in, uh, putting that grant together. It was, uh, very well received.
There's no match to it, is it?
No, sir. No, sir. And, and we think the 210 is enough money to do the stadium lights as well as a sound system for, for the.
No match?
Yeah.
Okay.
So great enhancement. So, um, I mentioned this to each of you, uh, this afternoon. We've been working on the debris landfill and that's become a little more complicated than we first realized and, uh, have a proposal in front of you from Withers and Ravenel to do some additional work that would, uh, uh, put in a new road around the landfill along with the, um, sedimentation erosion control work that, uh, we need to do. And that, uh, additional scope of work would be an amount of $26,300. And looked at different options from, um, extending the landfill and I don't see that we have a viable option other than to do this. And that would be my recommendation is to approve this agreement.
That's about, we don't have any option, do we?
No, sir.
Refuse it.
Looked at options of if we didn't. Looked at options of if we didn't extend the, um, landfill, if we were to just to, uh, grind the debris and wood chips, then we still get into a location of where do we put the debris? And the cost of the tub grinder and all that, it, it, uh, would exceed this, so...
And they'll come back to us with a proposal to make us permissible again?
Yes, yes.
I make a motion that we accept their proposed amount of $26,300 as compensation for development and design of the landfill.
Do we not have people that can make that, uh, accessible for us and come back within the county and do it?
I'm not sure if I follow, we, we don't have anyone on staff that is a PE that can do this work.
That's qualified?
Yes, sir.
So we've kinda got our back against the wall.
Yes, sir. And, 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 and there, there's not a community our size in North Carolina that would have a PE on board that could do this work.
And not even on the county side?
No, sir.
Wow.
Well, this is a situation where we don't have no choice. I second the motion from Ms. Kev.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One thing I wanted to mention also, one final thing at our next meeting, uh, and, uh, I appreciate Mr. Latimer's accolades about Dalton Milton, our code enforcement officer. Mr. Milton's working very hard to, um, enforce, um, our code. And he's working on a problem that's been around for a very long time. And, uh, at our next meeting, he's gonna give a report on just an update on this, what we're trying to accomplish. We have in the budget, um, $20,000 this year for demolitions of housing that doesn't meet the code. We might get one, one and a half houses done at that amount. We're trying to look at some creative ways to demo the houses that need to be demolished. But just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And it's, it's a little bit related to some of the issues with street maintenance, is that we have staffing issues there too. We, we don't have a separate, um, sanitation department, public works. The guys wear different hats and different days of the week, they're doing different jobs. And that creates some of those challenges. But I do appreciate the hard work that, uh, Dylan, Dilton is doing. And I think we've made strides, and he's got some good ideas on how we can improve things. We've also had conversations with the city attorney about ways we can deal with the condemnation proceedings. And you'll hear about that next, at our next month's meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, so comments of council, Mr. Martin?
Uh, well, I don't wanna be redundant or anything about the ball field. But, uh, I, I really want to thank the, um, Foundation of the Carolinas for, for awarding this grant. And this grant would not have been, been even approved had it not been for Michelle Pressler and Mackenzie Webb and our city manager, and I believe Megan Lambert, uh, worked on this project also. And I was very, very pleased to find out that, that this grant was approved. And I want to see that field lit, lit up like Yankee Stadium, Yankee Stadium up there. And, uh, with this new lighting system, I think it's gonna be well received. And it's just not for Hamlet Memorial Park, although that's where it's at. This is gonna benefit Richmond County and the community. Uh, we got players, you know, Rockingham, Hamlet, Elvick coming to play at our field with American Legion teams. So this is a real benefit, and we can have other things up there, uh, to benefit the community. And, uh, but I just wanna thank the Carolina, the Foundation of Carolinas for their, for their approval of this grant. Other than that, that's about it.
All right, Mr. Sellers?
I've got one question on the new business on the Opera House Discussion. We're not gonna discuss that?
We did.
We did? Okay.
That was the David Gaul, 17.
That was David, okay.
17, 750.
I have no comments.
Okay. Scovington?
Well, I feel like all we did was spend money tonight. Every time we turned around, it was 20,000 here and 20,000 there. And I guess it's kinda like going to the grocery store, isn't it? So, um, I just hope the people that are listening see where their tax dollars are going and what's happening. And we're not giving raises and pitching it out the window, but we hope we're making good, solid choices about things that have to be done. And some of these are community enhancement, and some of them are mandated by law. So just know that we can't do everything, but we do what we can. And so, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, um, make everyone aware that we have a newsletter that came out in our water bill for the city this month. And it was worked on again by Michelle Pressler and Mackenzie Webb. And there's a lot of information on these front and back of this sheet. So I hope everybody who gets a city water bill really takes a look at this because it's got dates, it's got events, it's got leaf and limb guidelines, it's just got a lot of stuff on it. And we are gonna be doing this on a regular basis. So I hope everybody appreciates the communication and just trying to get the word out to everybody what is going on and what is important in the city of Hamlet.
Mayor, the plan is to do that every other month, and we'll see how it's received and adjust accordingly.
Sounds good. And that's all I've got, so let's see. Item number 14, I have a motion to go in a closed session per General Statute 143-318-11A.
Does it move?
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.